It's 7:00 PM, April 14th, 2015. City Council meeting is now in order.
Alright, it is item one of the generous recognized groups of individuals. And as you can see, we've got Boy Scout troop 617. Leader is Gretchen Boons. You guys want to... yes ma'am?
Yes, we're troop 617 from Boston. Thank you for letting us attend.
Okay. You gentlemen have anything?
What badge are you working on?
Citizenship in community.
Yes, sir.
Can I ask Councilmember Fred Hagan a question? What are some disadvantages and advantages of this job?
How long do you have? I'll tell you what, let's meet after the meeting. Or I'll give you about, you can call me and we'll talk, okay? That's a long answer.
It's important, he said "job."
Good question.
Hey, what's your name, I'm sorry?
Alex Wiggs.
Alex Wiggs.
Jesse, do you have a question? What is this issue about? What is the heating back?
Yeah, what's the meaning?
The meeting, we have an agenda. We have an agenda here. And it encompasses everything that is only about city business. We don't discuss here how your garden is or anything. But if you have a complaint that deals with city business, that's what we discuss. And we discuss that only. Okay, so we can't discuss if Councilman Buckman doesn't like his motorcycle, or he doesn't like his dog, or anything. We don't discuss anything personally. Everything is about city business and city business only. That's what we discuss. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to the several who's received input from the public. Sure enough? Anyone else? Bids, contracts, proposals, services requested. Three water tank painting and repair bids. Jessica?
Yes, we had a bid out painting and repairing the three clear well tanks at the water treatment plant. And we received two bids. And the recommended low bidder is who's listed on your form. Got a lot of agenda items tonight. So we received two bids. The lowest bidder was by CMS Quality Services for the sum of $321,520. This bid occurred on March 31st at 10:00 AM. We advertised it accordingly. And that was the lowest price. So these tanks have been on our maintenance list and been in need of some painting for the last several years. And we've kind of tried to look at just painting the interior or doing those kinds of things. And at this point, it's progressed to where we really need to take care of the inside and the outside and do a thorough repair job. Not just overcoat, but sandblast, take it back down to the bare nettle and to kind of re-put the coatings back on. And make some minor repairs to the steel. Some of the ceiling beams need to be repaired. And there's some other minor repair work that needs to be done on all three tanks. So there are two of the tanks, 150 gallon. And there's one 280,000 gallon. I'm sorry, 200, 150,000 gallon and one 280,000.
So Jesse, you'll just rotate them through the next several months? Take one out of several of these?
Yes, with the installation of the new 1 million gallon clear well that was installed at the plant back in 2010, 11, that actually allows us to take out multiple tanks, these clear wells, at a time. So it kind of allows us to have a little bit more freedom to do that. Kind of bunching together a little bit, so we don't have to each one individually. But they may choose to do that depending on their crews, but...
I don't want to get too deep in the weeds, but is this the first time we've done this on these tanks, or is this...
No, we had a painting of these tanks back in, I believe it was... I did take another of that. In 2004. But I think it was just an overall current project. We did do the inside and outside, but we didn't really do many repairs. We just kind of did an overcoat.
Let me ask you a couple of questions, please. You indicated that they're going to sandblast it inside and outside? And also, once they sandblasted, were they primed it or sealed it?
Yes, they do a full coating system. So they'll sandblast it, take it down to the bare nettle, do a primer coat, do an initial layer, and then do a final coat. So there's multiple systems to that type of painting.
Water-based paint is it all-based paint?
I'm not at this sure. There's a special tenebic painting, paint spec that we call out that's specific to water tanks. Where you might be wrong. I think it is epoxy-based.
Care to come down on epoxy, okay? Real hard case, okay?
Something that's hopefully going to be able to sustain, you know, get contact with chlorine, you know, and so forth, and handle the elements. And hopefully lasts us longer than 10 years.
You just picked an industry standard paint spec based on the use. Next question.
We actually hired a professional tank inspector. He's a structural engineer that comes out and they clean the tank into the tank and provide us an inspection report.
Are they going to inspect the painting when it's painted up?
Yes. I've been hiring the same person to kind of inspect the painting process the last several tanks we've painted. It's helped, you know, helps ensure that we get a good quality project.
And they use some kind of tarp system or something when they're sandblasting the pitch?
Yes, generally, they'll have to make sure that there's no overspray or anything that could interfere with our treatment process. So they've been, the both bidders, I think, did make a visit to the plant and look at their locations and see what's in store for them. And we'll probably have a meeting prior to the job getting started and just discuss any issues that we have from a constructability standpoint and making sure that there's no interruption to what we need to do at the plant. So we've kind of already talked about different staging areas and making sure that we can still get deliveries while this work is being done.
How long will this take? From when it gets started?
It kind of depends. It shouldn't take more than three months to do. Probably less, to be honest. But we generally give them a decent window depending on what their other workload is so that they can time us, you know, work us into the schedule. So we'll likely have a tank or two be done during this fiscal year. Some of it will bleed over into the next fiscal year possibly, depending on when they're able to begin work and mobilize.
Have we used this company, CMS?
I have not had any dealings with CMS in the past. Or you recommend it on the list.
What mill is the paint, is it like a 3-mill, 2-mill?
It's higher than that.
I think each of those second coats are 5-mills. I'm not sure what that first coat is.
I remember on one of those...
It's not just 5-mills.
I remember on one of those things, I think it was just a slight repair. It was like a 3-mill repair or something. And what I'm talking about mill size is how thick that paint or epoxy is. And it's measured by mils, not by centimeters or anything like that.
And all of that was called out in the specification. So everybody was being the same in the same thing. So if no one has any other questions, I would ask the council to make a motion to recommend CMS Quality Services. If approved, bidder?
Mayor, I second the motion to approve CMS Quality Services for the clear well painting and repairs for $321,520.
Discussion? Motion's on the table to approve CMS Quality Service for the bid of $321,520 for the clear well tank, 150,000 gallon tank, and the 280,000 gallon clear well tank. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion is adopted. Number four, HRB, DRB, and Planning Zoning Proposals. Have y'all had time to look at this? Number A is, DRB is 218. It's tooling racing at Philly Actually Lane, lots 2, F, and G. I will ask Ms. Kathy to read the description.
Design change approval, DRB 218, tooling racing, 12,500 square foot retail and distribution building, lots 2F and 2G, Schuler Trust Division Phase 2. The Development Review Board met, reviewed, and recommended the approval of the site, building, landscaping, and lighting plans for the above referenced development within the conditions set forth.
I'll make a motion to approve DRB 218, tooling racing, approved by the Development Review Board.
Discussion? If you Googled this "tooling racing", I think it's going to be a big part store for racing components. And it's going to be a big deal right there. The motion is to approve DRB 218, tooling racing, Philly Actually Lane, lots 2 and 2G. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, motion is adopted. We're on to section B. DRB 219, Jackie Welch, Lincoln Way, proposed lot 30. Kathy, would you read the description, please?
Design standards approval, DRB 219, Jackie Welch, 7,500 square foot office building, proposed lot number 30, Main Street. The Development Review Board met, reviewed, and recommended approval of the site, building, landscaping, and lighting plans for the above referenced development within the conditions set forth.
This is my turn. Mayor, I make a motion to approve DRB 219. With the building, lighting, and landscape plans as discussed, the DRB...
Thank you, Councilman Simpson. This discussion? Motion on floors to approve DRB 219, Jackie Welch, Lincoln Way, proposed lot 30. With the proposed lighting and description that was... What did you say, Chris?
Excuse me, Commissioner, I went on to the next section.
Oh, that's good. To meet the zoning requirements as proposed by the DRB. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, motion is adopted, thank you. We have correspondence. If there's no objection, we will adopt the motion to approve the WHAS Crusade 5K Run on May 15th, 2015, and the Annual Street Concert July 11th, 2015.
Mayor, Councilman Williams is going to recuse himself as having been in Barstown since...
Since there is no objection, the motion to approve the 5K Annual Street Concert is adopted by unanimous consent. Which is, one is A, is with the Barstown Fire Department, WHAS Crusade 5K Run and the Annual Street Concert. Although the council has previously approved a letter of request for the use of the city property during the Kentucky Bourbon Festival opening up the grounds to allow alcoholic beverages outside the Spirit Garden, it needs to be approved as well for that by the council. So any discussions?
Mayor, I'd just like to hear the chief's take on the Kentucky Bourbon Festival request to have alcohol throughout the grounds. You've seen their plan, I just like that, we haven't heard from you yet.
I met with them early on. They asked me if we as a police would have any issues. Quite honestly, I said, obviously, it depends on what this body does. It's been our experience that actually we have more problems when we corral people, we try to put 2,000 people in a fenced area to drink. Going back to my days in rural with the Derby, that's why we spread things out. And I really firm believer, if we can handle it up there, we can handle it here. You know, they've talked about the grounds. And, you know, I think the weekend is anyway. Everybody's here to celebrate anyway. We don't have a big issue.
Is the fire chief here?
Yes, sir.
Oh, chief, you have any concerns or questions or...
No, sorry, for any of the areas that they put up fencing, we do occupancy loads inside of those areas. So that'll continue. If they, if I understand it correctly, they're going to set up the sales for the beer garden and things will still be inside our fenced area. And it should not affect, have a negative effect on anything that we need to do.
But do you have to get a fire truck in there if Xavier's catches on fire and these fences are up? That's not going to be an issue?
They were not put up in a manner that kept us from getting our equipment in last year. It's just that they put the fence around the grassed-in area by the restaurant there. And we do, we actually did have to do an occupancy load just because of the codes for that. But it doesn't hinder our getting apparatus in. But we do ask the, we get with the people with the Bourbon Festival and the craft to make sure that any tents that are set up in the roadway, that we can actually pass a truck and very, most of the time we'll actually drive an apparatus through there in the mornings to make sure that everything's clear. So I don't have any objections to it.
Mayor, that being the case, I'll make a recommendation. We approve the request from Kentucky Bourbon Festival Spirit Garden Request.
Second motion? Discussion? Motion is on the floors to approve the Kentucky Bourbon Festival Spirit Garden Request as discussed. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, motion is adopted, thank you. We're on to number six. Review of the minutes. If there's no objections, we will adopt the motion to approve the minutes of March 24th, 2015, and April 6th, 2015. Since there's no objections, the motion to approve the minutes is adopted by unanimous consent. Thank you, Councilman. Number seven, financial report? We have nothing?
Well, the committee meeting is Thursday. We're going to start talking about the budget. And I'll have that available for the people that come to the committee.
Do you know where we're going to start first?
As far as...
Which department?
No.
When will the budget be completed, the council can review it?
As soon as the mayor says it's okay to present it to the council. I gave a copy to him today and then...
I just got it today. And it's long.
Question, Mayor?
Just a sec.
Weren't we supposed to take our budgets to our respective committees first, or...
You can. Well, you know, if you were, in my opinion, I think if you take, if you have your committee, you go through your budget, and then let the finance committee have it. Then let's bring it to the council.
Okay, alright.
I think that would be the great procedure. I, you know, I think the committees should have a look at their budget and do that. And that's going to let you all know where you're standing on your committees. To make sure you, I guess that's homework.
We had that opportunity tonight at the Utility, Electric, and Cable Internet Committee meeting. So just to get it to them for the first time, knowing that it's got other hoops to jump through.
I know it's a little different than what we've been used to, but I think it gives everybody a good perspective on their committee of where they need to stand and what to do. Ordinances. In the first reading of 2015, repeal the tax exempt for the manufacturing establishments?
Mayor, I'd like to introduce the proposed ordinance to repeal tax exempt for manufacturing establishments and ask for it to be read in full.
Ask you, I mean Kathy, would you give the first?
Ordinance number B 2015, repeal tax exempt for manufacturing establishments. An ordinance repealing in its entirety, an ordinance style, an ordinance exempting manufacturing establishments from city taxes. Whereas the ordinance, or excuse me, original ordinance number 808, dated June 15th, 2004, provided an exemption from city taxes for five years without specifying which taxes. And whereas the said ordinance applied to any manufacturing operation not then located in the city if that entity would locate in Barstown, without making a specific determination that a particular entity would locate in Barstown only if such incentive were offered. And whereas the original ordinance was amended on June 6th, 2006, ordinance B 2006-09, to identify city property taxation, but did not specify whether that included both real and personal property taxation. And whereas the wording of the said ordinance and amendment is far too broad and not specific as to which taxes are exempt and as to when the inducement is essential. Now therefore being ordained by the city of Barstown that the original tax exempt for manufacturing establishment ordinances enacted on June 15th, 2004, and any and all amendments enacted regarding that ordinance are hereby repealed in their entirety. This ordinance shall be in full force and effective upon publication as required by law.
Mayor, this is the ordinance that was, and maybe was, or before the reading? Is this one we're discussing? Yes. And that was, this one is why we're reviewing this because the legal advice that we need to, has to be done. And it's first reading, so there's really no vote required at this time. So B 2015, the rezone of 2437 Janus C Adams. Mr. Williams?
Mayor would like to introduce the proposed ordinance B 2015, rezone number 2437, Janus C Adams, and ask for it to be read.
So you're turning?
Yes, sir. The B 2015 rezone number 2437 Janus C Adams. An ordinance amending and adopting as amended the zoning map entitled Zoning Map Cities of Barstown, Bloomfield, Fairfield, New Haven, and Nelson County, Kentucky by designated 1.223 acres at 971 Bloomfield Road, US 62, from R2 to Family Residential District, B3 Regional Retail Business District. The Nelson County Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval based on the findings of fact in the record. Property is described as follows, beginning at a found 5/8 inch rebar with a cap stamped Hibbs 2981 in the south right-of-way line of Bloomfield Road, aka US, United States Highway 62, corner to attractive land conveyed by Bypass Properties LLC of record and deep book 477, page 483 in the office of the clerk of Nelson County, Kentucky. Thence with the south right-of-way line of Bloomfield Road, north 79 degrees, 9 minutes, 3 seconds, east 260.48 feet, to a set 1/2 inch rebar with a cap stamped Wolf 3742 in the south right-of-way line of Bloomfield Road, corner to attractive land conveyed to Bluegrass American Properties LLC of record and deep book 448, page 12, in the clerk's office of Forsyth. Thence leaving the south right-of-way line of Bloomfield Road running with the west line of said Bluegrass American Properties LLC, south 6 degrees, 1 minute, 36 seconds, east 220.24 feet to a found 5/8 inch rebar, no cap, corner to said Bluegrass American Properties LLC, thence with the north line of American, Bluegrass American Properties LLC, south 74 degrees, 13 minutes, 37 seconds, west 89.84 feet to a found metal post, corner to said Bluegrass American Properties LLC, and Bypass Properties LLC, thence with the north line of said Bypass Properties LLC, north 81 degrees, 29 minutes, 39 seconds, west 169.89 feet to a found metal post, corner to said Bypass Properties LLC, thence with the east line of said Bypass Properties LLC, north 8 degrees, 14 minutes, 15 seconds, west 171.05 feet to the point of beginning, having an area of 1.223 acres. This ordinance or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith are repealed to the extent of such conflict. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect following publication summary as required by law.
This is the first reading, there's no vote required on this one. We're going to go to number three, B 2015, the Solid Waste Amendments.
Mayor, I'd like to...
And we're going to do 2015 Combined Utility Amendments. Now, Councilman Buckman, will you introduce, please?
Mayor, I would like to introduce the following proposed ordinances, B 2015 Solid Waste Amendment, and B 2015 Combined Utility System Amendment, and ask for them to be read in full.
Ordinance number B 2015 Solid Waste Management Amendments. An ordinance amending and adopting as amended an ordinance related to Chapter 51, Solid Waste Management of the City of Barstown's Code of Ordinances. The City of Barstown, Kentucky, does hereby ordain as follows, that Section 51.10 Delinquency be amended as follow. Section 51.10 Delinquency, strike any bill not paid by the due date listed on the bill, shall be deemed delinquent, and a late payment penalty shall be assessed to the account in the amount equal to 5% of the amount of the unpaid charges, and a service fee of $3 shall be assessed to the account. Though where the bill includes charges for more than one utility service, there should be no duplication of the penalty and service fee. Insert, all customers will be billed monthly as specified in Combined Utility System, subsection 55.05. All ordinances or parts of the ordinances in conflict are hereby repealed to the extent of that conflict. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect following publication as required by law.
This is the first vote on this, so it's no requirement. What we're doing here, and the reason why, is because Mike had stated in a previous meeting where we were getting where there were, Tracy, correct me if I'm wrong. Excuse me, where the front was getting really pounded heavily in the front, and then maybe in the back, and we're changing all of this to even this out, correct?
Correct.
Just going to make it easier where the steady flow is through the first month, it's heavy, last month is... is heavy, last month is heavy again, and we're going to try to even that. We've gotten growth, so that's what we're trying to do.
So we're stacking up the payments?
Yeah, we're just stacking them out, is what we're trying to do. And Mike had, had seen this coming and done this before, and I appreciate him and Tracy working on this.
Yes, she has another one to read, Mayor.
Yes.
Ordinance number B-2015, combined utility systems amendment. An ordinance amending and adopting as amended an ordinance styled, an ordinance of the city of Barstown, Kentucky relating to the operation of the city's combined utility systems, chapter 55. Be it hereby ordained by the city of Barstown, Kentucky, that section 55.05 be added as follows. 55.05 billing when due penalty. 55.05, insert, all customers will be billed monthly. Billing dates for groups of accounts shall be as deemed appropriate by the CFO or officer in charge of billing. Billing dates shall be on or near the 1st, 7th, 15th, or 21st of each month. Each bill shall show the charge for each of the service on that account. All bills shall be paid by the due date shown on such bills, and all bills not paid by such time shall be subject to discontinuance of any or all services. One late or delinquent notice shall be rendered after the due date for each unpaid bill, and shall give the customer notice that the service may be disconnected on the 10th day after the notice is rendered. A late fee of 5% of the unpaid charges, or $3.50, whichever is greater, shall be added to the account and shall be paid by the specified disconnect date. All payments to accounts are applied proportionately to the service charges rendered unless a customer in writing to the CFO specifies that the payment is for a particular service. All payments may be applied to the past due charges first, and then current charges. Excuse me. If payment of the account balance is not received by the city by the disconnect date, any end or all service may be disconnected, provided however that only cable service is unpaid, no other service shall be disconnected, and provided that if a particular service is paid in full, that service cannot be disconnected. A disconnect fee will be charged to each account disconnected. That fee will be $25 for customers' accounts within the Barstown city limits, or $40 for all customers, all other customers. The fee will be charged for each truckload to that house to disconnect a specific service. The city shall charge only a $10 disconnect fee if the only service disconnected is internet, and if that disconnect is done from the office. Reconnection of service shall be made only after payment of all current and past due bills and account balances, and after the customer requests a reconnect. Reconnection of service will be performed as staff work schedules permit, typically next business day for water or electric, and three business days for cable. Reconnection of internet disconnected from the office will be made during office hours on the day payment is received and reconnection is requested. This ordinance or part of ordinance in conflict herewith are repealed to the extent of such conflict. The ordinance shall be in full force and effect following publication summary as required by law.
Five and six. B-2015 water amendments, and B-2015 wastewater amendments.
Mayor, I'd like to introduce the following proposed ordinances, and ask them to be read in full. B-2015 water amendments, and B-2015 wastewater amendments.
Ordinance number B-2015, water amendments. An ordinance amending and adopting as amended an ordinance related to chapter 52, water of the city of Barstown's code of ordinances. The city of Barstown, Kentucky does hereby ordain as follows, that section 52.06 billing, payment, due date, and penalty, paragraph B, and section 52.11 tampering with water meters, fines be amended as follows. Section 52.06 billing, payment, due date, and penalty, paragraph B, strike all content, insert, all customers will be billed monthly as specified in combined utility system subsection 55.05. Section 52.11 tampering with water meters, fines, customers shall be held responsible for tampering with, breaking seals of, interfering with, connecting or disconnecting the city's water meters, or other equipment of the city installed on the customers' premises, and shall be held liable for the same according to law. Notwithstanding, any person who reconnects or bypasses a meter that has been disconnected for non-payment of service will be assessed $150 for the first occurrence, and $300 per occurrence for any additional occurrences in addition to any other applicable balances, fees, or charges due. Likewise, any person who establishes water service by bypassing, connecting, or reconnecting a meter will be assessed, strike, $100, insert, $150 per occurrence. No one except the employees or agents of the city shall be allowed to connect, disconnect, or make any internal or external adjustments to any meter or any other piece of apparatus which shall be the property of the city. All ordinances or part of ordinances in conflict are hereby repealed to the extent of that conflict. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect following publication as required by law.
And no vote is required on, on this one either.
Just one question on that one, Mayor.
Sure.
Not, not that it matters, but how did we arrive at the $150 per occurrence? From 100 to 150?
Mike, Mike made the adjustment. Mike made the adjustment. I think, could be an intention, Peter.
Oh, I didn't know.
Ordinance number B-2015, wastewater amendments. An ordinance amending and adopting as amended an ordinance related to chapter 53 wastewater of the city of Barstown's code of ordinances. The city of Barstown, Kentucky does hereby ordain as follows, that section 53.125 billing, paragraph B, be amended as follows. Section 53.125 billing, paragraph B, strike all content, insert, all customers will be billed monthly as specified in combined utility system subsection 55.05. All ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict are hereby repealed to the extent of that conflict. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect following publication as required by law.
No vote required on that one. So we're at seven and eight, which is the B-2015 electricity amendments, B-2015 cable television amendments. Councilman Simpson, will you introduce those two ordinances, please? I'll have Kathy read them.
Mayor, I would like to introduce the following proposed ordinances, and ask them to be read in full. B-2015 electric amendments, B-2015 cable television.
Ordinance number B-2015, electric rate amendments. An ordinance amending and adopting as amended an ordinance styled, an ordinance establishing and fixing a schedule of rates to be charged by the city of Barstown for electrical current used by residential, commercial, and industrial customers of the city of Barstown, providing and prescribing for billing, due dates, and penalty for failure to pay charges due within the time so prescribed. Establishment and fixing a power cost adjustment surcharge for all customers regardless of classifications, chapter 50. The city of Barstown, Kentucky does hereby ordain as follows, that section 50.08 billing when due penalty, paragraph B, and section 50.10 tampering with electric meters, fines be amended as follows. Section 50.08 billing when due penalty, paragraph B, strike all content, insert, all customers will be billed monthly as specified in combined utility system subsection 55.05. Section 50.10 tampering with electric meter fines, customers shall be held responsible for tampering with, breaking seals of, interfering with, connecting or disconnecting the city's electric meters, or other electrical equipment of the city installed on the customers' premises, and shall be held liable for the same according to law. Notwithstanding, any person who reconnects or bypasses a meter that has been disconnected for non-payment of service will be assessed $150 for the first occurrence, and $300 per occurrence for any additional occurrences in addition to any other applicable balances, fees, or charges due. Likewise, any person who establishes electric service by bypassing, connecting, or reconnecting a meter will be assessed, strike, $100, insert, $150 per occurrence. No one except the, except the employees or agents of the city shall be allowed to connect, disconnect, or make any internal or external adjustments to any meter or any other piece of apparatus which shall be the property of the city. All ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict are hereby repealed to the extent of that conflict. This, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect following publication as required by law. Ordinance number B-2015, cable television and amendments. An ordinance amending and adopting as amended an ordinance styled, an ordinance related to the operation of a municipal on cable television communication system to provide service to residents and customers within the city of Barstown and Nelson County, Kentucky, authorizing the expenditure of money from the 1984 bond sale and from the general fund to purchase the system and the creation of department, which shall be called the Barstown Cable TV Department. The city of Barstown, Kentucky does hereby ordain that section 54.07 monthly billing, late fee, disconnection fee due to default, paragraph A, be amended as follows. Section 54.07 monthly billing, late fee, disconnection due to default. Paragraph A, strike all content, insert, all customers will be billed monthly as specified in combined utility system subsection 55.05. All ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict are hereby repealed to the extent of that conflict. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect following publication as required by law.
Okay, no vote is required on that one either. So the section B was be the second reading of the B-2015-03 zoning regulation amendments, so Kathy, will you give a second reading, please?
Ordinance number B-2015-03, an ordinance relating to an ordinance amending and adopting as amended zoning regulations for the cities of Barstown, Bloomfield, Fairfield, New Haven, and Nelson County, Kentucky by amending Article 5 definitions and Article 9 general zoning district regulations. Whereas pursuant to KRS 100.211, paragraph 2, on February 24th, 2015, the joint city-county planning commission held a public hearing, and subsequently on February 24th, 2015, the planning commission unanimously voted to recommend approval of the proposed amendments to the zoning regulation for all of Nelson County, and whereas the proposed zoning regulation amendments will address the fence type revision and zoning compliance permit exception, as well as the accessibility improvements, definition, and setback exceptions. Now therefore, the city of Barstown, Kentucky does hereby ordain as follows. Section 1, that Article 5 definitions is hereby amended to create the definition of accessibility improvement, and amend the definition of structure as set forth in the documents attached hereto, made a part herof, and incorporated by reference as if fully set forth. Insert, accessibility improvement, an unrooted and open structure, including a ramp or curlet, that 1. allows a person with a physical disability access to a dwelling, and 2. is exterior to a dwelling. Structure, anything constructive or erected, the use of which requires location on the ground or attached to something having a location on the ground, but not including fences up to, strike, 60 inches, insert, 7 feet, in height or poles, and appurtenances thereto used for the provision of public utilities, including buildings and mobile homes. Section 2, that Article 9 general zoning district regulations, 9.8 special yard provisions, paragraph D, is hereby amended to create an exception for accessibility improvements as set forth in the documents attached hereto, and made a part herof, and incorporated by reference as if fully set forth. Paragraph D, insert, accessibility improvement exceptions, accessibility improvements may extend or project within 10 feet of prime and rear property lines and within 5 feet of side property lines. Accessibility improvements shall be permitted only for the access of a disabled resident of the dwelling, and shall be removed if the dwelling is no longer occupied by a disabled resident. Accessibility improvements shall not be considered impervious area in the calculation of minimum open space. A variance shall not be required for accessibility improvements meeting these standards. However, the property owner shall be required to obtain the zoning compliance permit to ensure compliance within these standards. This ordinance or part of ordinance is in conflict herewith are repealed to the extent of such conflict. The ordinance shall be in full force and effect following publication as law.
Mayor, I'd make a motion to accept B-2015, ask 03 zoning regulations amendments, as read. Second, Councilman Simpson. This motion is going to require a independent vote, individual vote, so I'll start with Councilman Simpson, please.
Uh, uh.
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 As have it. Motion is adopted. Let's move on to reports of staff and committees. So the first one we have is A, which will be the street solid waste committee meeting that was on April the 1st, 2015. Councilman Simpson, you have the floor.
At that meeting, all the council members, all the committee members were present, which covered a lot of ground with it. The first thing that came forth was street resurfacing, and Mr. Latry advised that we were only paving 4.4 miles a year, and less a year before, and our target is 5.8 per year, so therefore I think we, the objective, we're like six years behind on our paving projects. Designs. Mr. Latry brought forth, the county had accepted, proposed adoption of acceptance of paving for roadways in Nelson County. She suggested before the committee that we also accept them guidelines, that she, then we put it before the committee to recommend it to the council, and if asked unanimously that we would present this guidelines that the county uses to be also adopted by the city. That's a municipal order 2015 that we'll look at, and she'll explain more in the new business. Then, had a request for some new, a new employee that she'll, Mr. Green's going to address in the, in new business. Private road signs. There's a few streets they advised, I wasn't aware of, that have our private roads, but they do deserve a sign, they have to have a sign, city, so they'll be uniform, we'll pay for the cost of these private signs. I think the total five, the design they came up with, so they'll specify that they're private roadway. It doesn't take a motion to approve, it's just a, she kind of want a consensus of approval from the committee on this design and the sign.
It's just to kind of meet with the E-911, with the, kind of make their audit for the emergency surveillance requirements, that for EMS, by police dispatching, that they have to be able to respond, be able to navigate to all addresses, and a lot of private roads. It's more prevalent in the county, that issue, we don't have probably a handful of private roads in the city, private streets, but we felt that it needed to be addressed and have a uniformity, and be consistent with whatever means and design that we use. The example he showed was of being consistent with all our other city signs, so that it is blue with a letter, that we're going to add a PBT at the end, at, at the end of the sign, to show and indicate that it is a private road, and help indicate to our own work, work crew forces that we're not going to be privately consulting, or doing maintenance on those roads.
As y'all are aware, Josh is in cooperation with the county, they're, they're doing this E-911, and they're doing mapping of, trying to map every road, every private road, and I think that's part of the quiet, everything having addressed.
To be properly addressed, to meet the standards.
Right. And that's, that's what they're doing, and it has to be done, so. Simon, should I go first?
Shortly discussed on sidewalks, the policy on it is a 50/50 split between the city and the residents, but just said they've been working diligently on trying to alleviate the sidewalk trip hazards, especially in the areas around the areas. So that's ongoing work of progress, folks.
A little at a time.
A little at a time, it's a budget. Garden bulky item picks up, that was a discussion with Ben Bird, and something that really had me brought forth. The bulky items, we got a high workers' comp claims, the gardeners men is at top of the list with injuries, and a lot of the injuries are due to that the ordinances, the municipal order is kind of old, I suppose. The weight is 200 pounds, I don't have the notes, like 200 pounds on these guys' lift, and a lot of these houses, especially rental houses you see around town, you see mattresses out there, all kinds of furniture, and these guys got pictures of the stuff, and we're having, let's see, 223,000 in workers'. Let's see, two hundred and twenty-three thousand in workers comp, two hundred and twenty-six thousand six sixty-one, and that's what the city's paying out in workers comp, paying to these guys because they're lifting too much and picking up things that shouldn't be, plus we're doing damage to our garbage trucks that's unnecessary because it's items that we shouldn't be picking up in the record garbage. And I think we suggested that we need to revisit the guidelines and try to educate the public more on the weight of the garbage cans, because it's all in the guidelines in the city ordinances, and maybe a lot of public don't know, but we need to send, we've come to the fact that we need to send out something in with our bills to advise them to regulate these weights and sizes of these garbage cans and bulky items and to try to alleviate some of this worker comp claims. We also addressed trying to get a grapper truck, I think it's in the next budget to be used, possibly to use one, in order to pick up this bulky items, so these guys don't have to be dedicated just for that service. A lot of this bulky item, the city does have policy, just whenever you want to set it out, you pick it up, don't have a weight, no amount, you see a lot of these set outs is from landlords that evicted people, this stuff is left out for the city at their will. My opinion, I think the people that set out this stuff, it needs to be billed, it needs to be a fee put on it for the bulky item pickups, that we pay and take care of this purchase of this grapper truck. For what we collect, I think we collect fourteen dollars a month on garbage, and we're going way above and beyond for this collections. Let's see, what else? And that's pretty much it.
Let me say, one comment for Jessica. I thought I put a note on my phone, but I guess I didn't. It was brought to my attention that one of the streets, I think it might be Guthrie, that has been paved a long time, but I'll, I'll check my source, I mean, a long time, because somebody told me what year it was.
There are several streets that are approaching twenty, twenty-plus years, and that was kind of the trend I wanted to bring to the council's attention, that back when asphalt prices were around forty dollars a ton, we were doing a pretty good job for about eight years there, we were kind of meeting up with a fifteen-year pavement cycle, but then when asphalt prices started getting up into the sixty-nine, seventy-dollar a ton mark, and we had increased the amount of responsibility of streets, you know, but probably fifty-eight miles or so in responsibility, but yet we didn't really have any additional, we was trying to do more with less, and so we started getting behind. So generally, every year, we do do our resurfacing lift, and we present that to the council and drive around, and we do, you generally know that our needs are greater than our funds to do resurfacing, knowing that some aren't getting paid as frequently as we would like, but we're generally trying to prioritize based on traffic counts, you know, which streets are getting the most traffic, seeing the heaviest loads, and trying to focus on those, and oftentimes, a lot of the residential streets that are dead end or cul-de-sacs generally get paved on a farther cycle, you know, trying, just as trying to prioritize. So it is something that we're seeing, seeing the trend, that it's gradually getting a little bit farther behind, and just kind of wanting to bring that to attention. It's the last few years maybe, or maybe five years ago, it wasn't as noticeable, you know, because you're just maybe, but over time, I think in the next five years, we might really start seeing it creep up more. So just one of those things now, whether we need to look at other ways, maybe trying to get some additional funds from time to time, maybe from the state, or looking at power distribution of funds, but it's certainly that, I'm not surprised that Gaffney has not been paid in a while, or Guthrie, Guthrie.
Well, you said eighty miles straight, and if you do the math, you said we were certain four something, four point something a year.
And that's not bad here, you know, there were like two point seven, two point eight, three point something, you know, so, or in one year, in two thousand and seven, five or seven, I can't remember which off the top of my head, we resurfaced zero streets. So I'm not sure what happened in that budget cycle, but no money was put forth to street surfacing. So that, I mean, that automatically puts you back, you know, a little bit behind. Now, in two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, we did receive about a hundred thousand, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars additional money from the state, there was some extra surplus, and they shared, the county got some, and we received some funds, and that only enabled us to get a little closer to that goal, and that was when we had a hundred thousand dollars in our resurfacing budget total to resurface. So we were able to do some of those streets where you've been putting it off, that needed milling, those kinds of things, that generally got kind of pushed back, because milling costs extra, you know, you don't, so you don't get as much for your money because you're having to do additional maintenance on that, but.
And with the state, could seventy-five thousand, will that affect the city of Bardstown resurfacing rates issue?
Sure, it has a budgetary impact. Hopefully, hopefully with the results of the loss of municipal aid monies from the gas tax, that I'm hoping maybe asphalt prices will also go down as a result of lower gas prices. Hoping, I'm not, I'm not counting on that for long-term means to make, to make that up, but I'm hoping that it somewhat will balance the counterbalance. We'll see, found out in August.
Fine, we'll see.
Guthrie looks pretty good, we've been out there on that underground job, Guthrie's, what is he, so shaped, it's demery, is it?
It's demery.
It's demery.
Need the cable TV programming meeting, April the first, two thousand fifteen, Mr. Mills?
Yeah, we, that's our regularly scheduled meeting of the programming committee, we review the renewal dates of contracts, if there are any extraordinary conditions or carriage requirements associated with any of the renewals, we go over those. I think we've got the one contract in question at this last meeting was the Smithsonian Channel, which is on a very lightly penetrated HD tier, and the programming committee voted to ask them for an additional extension, while we asked them to reconsider their demands to be melted down to Digital Basic. So they want us to send a flyer in the next, one of the next mailers, and ask folks that subscribe to Digital Basic if they would care to have Smithsonian added to that tier and incur the increased cost and/or to drop it. So the committee basically said, let's get some feedback on that from the folks that would be affected, and if Smithsonian doesn't give us the extension, technically it would still feel dark at the end of this month, while we work that out. That's, that's about it.
All right, what about C, the master, master service agreement and task authorization?
Oh, yeah, sorry, yeah, it's Brad Thornton, the consultant formerly with RW VAC, who's handled our KU contract reviews and our SEPA, Southeastern Power Administration, contracts and hydroelectric projects that are involved in the vulnerable river system. Basically, he's changed companies, and we need to execute a new master agreement and task authorization for those specific things that he takes care of for us.
All right.
I don't know if that needs a vote, but just here to report on it, I'm not sure, Larry, do we need a council vote on that?
It's budgeted, I can just tell you, I can't find it this quick, there's two tasks, one SEPA and one is the review of the KU rate filing that happens every night, and if y'all noticed, there was a raise of rates and anticipated five, six, seven percent, whatever it is, that we passed through. Well, we hire, all these cities, getting power from them, hire this consultant, and they review, and our bill will be something like seven or eight thousand dollars to review and so, as I recall, in senior, I was packed with the actual contracts, there are two tasks, I think they're, they're under ten thousand total, and with this firm, and they're budgeted every year, and they'll be in this month. So I don't, I don't know that we need to do anything but report on it, the mayor asked that we bring it to your attention, and we include it in the, in your material.
D, the classification compensation plan, Mr. Larry Green?
Just like to report that Paul Coons study that has been ongoing, it's not wrapped up, and Coons was out of the state for a while, and we're back, and we're back on, on task with that, and our, our goal is to have, have the study become part of the budget process, so that, that any changes, additions that would have a budgetary impact can be addressed at that time, so along those lines, Mr. Coons is coming to the finance committee meeting on Thursday afternoon and will be presenting his, his report then. One of the things that, that we, we talked about, there'll be several changes as far as types of positions and, and numbers of positions, like we're going to have different levels of CSR's, different levels of maintenance workers, but in addition to that, one specific thing that Jessica's asked me to look into, she's proposing, and I've got prepares, not ready for an ordinance, but this is, we've had, and Jessica, you correct me if I'm wrong here, but we've had a, a part-time MS four inspector in, in our, in our classification plan and, and as an authorized position, and we never have filled that position, and what we're wanting to do is to, to combine that position with an SSES supervisor, so this position would not only look at sewer overflows and manage the, the inspection of the sewers and work with the contractors on that and work with our own crews, but also would work on storm water, storm water control and permits, and then general, not procurement permits, but permits for going into the streets, like when people cut driveways and such. So what I have, and I'll, I'll hand this out, you can look at it, and then maybe at the next meeting, we'll, we'll have a, have this in ordinance form, is that this job title of MS four inspector and SSES supervisor, just want to make you aware of it because it's a little bit different, and what we'll be talking about at some more later point.
Consulting the agency for scope of work on the merger of the fire department, Chief Howard.
Sure, just purpose to not just come forward and like, know that myself, well, the staff in the fire department has made a presentation to the safety committee with some budgetary impacts that we're proposing this year, one of which is this study for the consolidation of the two departments. Discussion with the contract between the city and corporation is continuing on, and the mayor can speak to that as well, but in that process is the corporation, or the town, Nelson County Volunteer Fire Department Corporation is looking at funding half of a study to find out feasibility of consolidating the two departments, and I would be asking the council through this budget process to include the cost for half of that study into the budget as well. The only thing that I'm asking for here tonight is basically your blessing to move forward with contacting some fire departments that have been consolidated, to get, I'm going to look at departments that have similar demographics, and hopefully in our region of the United States, and, you know, not west coast, east coast type of things that would bar our way of what we're trying to do, but just to move forward with contacting them and get some ideas for pricing, so that we can include it into the budget process as, as we move forward with that. So I'll, I know that brings up several questions probably, and I'll, I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
So you're wanting, you're going to do this, but you're going to ask, you're going to ask, you know, what you're asking for is to make those phone calls to see how their process went?
Correct, I'm just going.
And then we'll go and see who they used.
Well, I'll get some ideas from them, how their process was, how they use, those are all things that I can discuss with those chiefs that land. Ultimately, if we get this pricing, the council agrees on it, and the corporation board agrees to put funding into their budgets, there won't be anything done until it comes to you guys, and we will actually do scope work, a bid proposal, we'll receive the sealed bids, we'll, we'll, it'll be just like any government, just like Jessica's surmount extensions or, or something of that nature. So this is, this is basically just your blessing to, and everybody to you guys, to let you know that I want to, we've talked about it now, we, it's very important that we let the public know what we're doing every step of the way, I want to be completely open, you know, this is just a look to the feasibility of joining the departments, and the first step is to try to find out what kind of pricing we need to build into the budget.
Let me ask you a question, just, you know, once you complete this study, and if you merge, well, what's that, what's that, for insurance, ISO?
Insurance service office.
ISO, merging, would we go down to a five, a four, we already a five, would we go down to a five, I mean, we already a five, we'll go down to a four, if we merge?
That, the study would see if there's any impact in the insurance service office either positively or negatively. Right now, the city is surveyed as its own entity, in other words, the corporation's equipment, and for the most part, their manpower and things don't count for the city's ISO rating. Keep in mind that the city's volunteers are one and the same of the corporation's volunteers. So then, we do the city's survey, and it comes back with the number, the last time we surveyed, two years ago, we had a combination five, nine. Then, the corporation is surveyed separately, and they came back with a combination six, nine. There could be a situation where it could positively affect, affect that rating, because all the equipment then would be grouped together as one, or it could have a negative effect on it because of the size of the district and the location of the equipment to, in proximity. So again, valuable information that'll be run through the consultant's table.
Well, what actually you're asking for tonight, by the way, it sounds to me, is something you can do on your own as the chief to get this information and have it when and if you want a bid, right?
That's correct, the only thing that I want to do is, is get this information and start putting it into the budget, so I will be approaching the safety committee, and, and with this information, I'll build it into the budget, because we'll have to have it into the budget before we can bid it out next year and expect that cost, so, am I saying that properly? Kind of a two-fold thing, we don't want to bid the project now because we can't pay for it, it's not in this budget.
Well, but at this point, I mean, at least I don't know that they have, has the corporation agreed to pay, to pay their half on it at this point, or?
Yeah, the only thing that I can do now is give you my word, because I'm involved with that negotiation, I know the corporation is looking at paying their portion of that. I know the corporation is looking at paying their portion of that, some portion of that. They realize that there's a cost with it and they're looking at deferring an apparatus replacement plan possibly to allow them to come up with the funding to do that. So they are preparing to do that, I can tell you that.
I have not received anything saying that they will, if I might.
But again, to get your information, I don't know that we need a vote or anything to do what you can do anyhow for finding out your information on it.
I just wanted to make sure that the council was well aware of when they heard that I was calling for pricing or calling these other about consolidation, that you knew what was going on. It's very important that the council and the general public understand in a situation as tedious as this, that no one is stepping ahead, no one's running ahead, no one's getting left behind, that we're all trying to do this together. And it's tough, I mean, it's--
Well, as Bobby knows, what he's asking for tonight is he's not, he's just letting know that he's going to call these other fire departments to ask who they used and how did it work for them and kind of get an idea of what it costs for them. And it's just a fact-finding mission is what he's on.
It's not prudent to call companies that do this and ask them for a price to do it and then go through the government procurement process and have them bid. It's just not--
That'd be unethical.
You know, we don't want to step across that line.
So what he, that's all he's going to do is just find out that preliminary information at this time. And as you all know, we've gone through this since 2005, when I was first here and of course my information has gone even deeper than that and I think it's when, even when Philip Parrott was chief, there were Jamaicans, they'd been going through this whole deal.
In 2005, these, you know, in 1995, the two departments actually came about. In 2005, there was already discussion of merger. In 2007, there were quotes taken for merger and I have those quotes, but they are obviously dated at this point in time, so we would not want to use those figures. But we're in here again in 2015, still talking about the same thing. So it is important for us to move past the point of talking about it and speculation. Speculation is the one, when you read all of the merger information, speculation is the killer. If you don't put information out or one party thinks the other party is running ahead or one party is getting left behind, it truly is a negotiation that needs to be made out in front of the general public so that they realize their fire departments are not going anywhere. This is merely an opportunity to try to get the best service at the most reasonable price.
And what's, what everybody has to understand and even the public and the council has to understand is this came on, not just on my desk, but this has come on every mayor's desk every year and it's hit my, it's hit my desk. It was there at Dixie's desk, I seen that looks through files later, it was on her desk, the mayor before her, I think, it was on his desk, Dixie's desk, Dick Eaton's desk, Shackle's desk, and now it's on my desk and it's been, it's been a stepchild of the whole thing. So we're going to take care of the problem and we'll see until one way or another. And that's where we have to be because it's, can't continue to deal with this situation. We have more, I won't say more, but we have a lot of problems within the city and this needs to be remedied.
We should not take lightly the amount of money that will be spent with this study. But irregardless of how the study comes back and says that how we should form, move as a merger, move to separate some, however that comes back, there's going to be invaluable information in this study that's going to talk about our service demands into the future, into 2030, 2035, our administration, manpower needs, equipment needs. So there's going to be invaluable information in this. It's not like if we do the study, merger does not actually take place, that we just threw away the sum of money of the public because we're going to use information that's in that, whether we merge or whether we go respectfully on our own way. Does that make sense? Any other questions? Mayor, if you will allow, I have our 2014 yearbook for the fire department that I'll pass out and I just want to make a couple of small references on it and I have to take any questions that were on that. Did that wrap up there all the questions that you have on the consolidation discussion?
Marla?
Larry Green's got some questions.
With the, it seems like the biggest problem and the stumbling block in the fire departments over the years, and I've been at this since 1996 and before that even, the biggest stumbling block is not whether or not we merge and not even how we merge, but the stumbling block is the fact that the county residents through their elected officials, or at least from their elected officials, don't want the same level of service. They only want $50 a year worth of fire protection service in the county. And the city is paid per household. And over the years, the city has paid somewhere around 80 to 100 to 120, depending on how you do the arithmetic, dollars per year per household in fire protection costs. So I wonder if a study that's going to tell us how we might merge, how that study would convince the county to allow more money for fire protection? Because it's not a question of how we can merge. There's, we have five statutes under which we could operate and there are various combinations that would work. So it's not really the merger, it's the funding. And how would an outside agency, even theoretically, would they do a study that would convince the county that they would like more fire protection or would like to pay more?
Built into the study is a segment that interviews, how do you call that? So people from the community, from both communities, from the communities of each fire district, the city fire district and the corporation's fire district. And it will assess things like what level of service the people believe they are getting. Sometimes there is a difference in what they perceive that they are receiving and the level of service that they are actually receiving. Future demands of the level of service in those areas and the study will also, of course, address the level of service that we are actually, that we are actually able to provide. And then I think that would relate in some manner to another part of the scope of work which talks about the revenue streams and the appropriateness of the funding for each of those revenue streams. So there are segments in the scope of work that will approach both level of service and proper funding. Can you have a question on that? And I have some more that you guys can pass those around and if you wanted to have one. Just want to make, this is just, just touches on the highlights of the 2014 year for the fire department. Inside the front cover is a letter that you can read at your leisure, but on the page adjacent to that is with the chief's log, which by ordinance, we should, we keep these figures and update the council on those. And we are stating traditionally around that 500 runs per year with the combined departments. And you'll see that the Barstown Fire Department made 301 of those runs this past year, Barstown Nelson County Volunteer Fire Department making 214. And those numbers will fluctuate from department to department, but most typically over the past six, eight years probably, I've been in that 500 runs a year. On the next page, inside the middle, up to your left, is the chief's log on training hours and this 3,476 hours is man hours spent in training. So of the 15,000 members that we have, you can see very quickly that the state's minimum of 20 hours per member is greatly surpassed here in the amount of hours that each volunteer has put into training. And at the bottom are all the different areas of training that are included. I'm not going to go through each one of the noteworthy news headlines that you see over there. Most of these have been either in the paper or heard about in the substation and at 150, a truck committed, a truck in that station, new members that have been added, graduating opportunities and community work. But on the next page, you will see that there are some members that have retired. Here John Roe Sr. and Mo Shams. John Roe Sr. with the department, 33 years. I think that's, when you look nationally at the statistics, most fire, volunteer fire service keep their volunteers somewhere around five to eight years. So that was a good long run. Mr. Mo Shams came to us, he served 10 years in the service and he set another milestone. I think he came to us when he was almost 70 years old and served 10 years with us and retired at almost 80, 80. New members down at the bottom, apologize that a couple of them we were unable to have photos for. And then the opposing page just gives you some of the photos that we, from scenes that we experienced this past year. The back has the current roster at the end of 2014. And I know that covers that really quickly. I don't want to take up the time, it's in print. If you have questions, you can always feel free to contact me anytime at the station, call me cell phone. If this brings up any questions, I'll be glad to sit down with you and answer them. I had a council member come to my office today and sit down with me for probably an hour to discuss and I love the interest, I have a lot of enthusiasm. I'm really dedicated to the fire service and I'd love to sit down with any one of you that has time and we'll discuss any issues that you might have.
Thank you, sir.
Chief Howard?
Yes.
I think Mo Shams came here when he was 60. Am I wrong in that? He's not 80.
I got, I got my ears. I missed a digit on my ears. Thank you for--
Do you work it up or whatever they read in your hands all the way? So I apologize for that.
Councilman Williams, you want to figure the red department out?
Yes, sir.
Want to add you in on that?
Okay, I'll be brief. I'll be brief within the meeting, by the way, which was three hours. We met on March 26th. Quick report on youth football. They're looking at a possible alliance with North Harden Youth Football and they're going to refurbish or replace helmets. Youth stalker registration is up, so is baseball and softball registrations. We spent the majority of our time talking about a field use policy. Apparently there are a lot of teams that like to have baseball tournaments out at the Dean Watts Park. And so what they were charging before, they didn't feel like it was very cost-effective. So the board came up with a policy for baseball or softball, I think, 1,000 per weekend for tournaments. Before was a lot less than that. Playground equipment has been ordered. I think that came from the Bellmere Trust, about $13,800, so that'll be in shortly. They've already submitted their budget. There was some discussion regarding Betham High School subleasing their baseball field at Dean Watts. So the director's going to talk to him about that. And the last thing we mentioned is that, a reminder that the city-county rep agreement terminates June 30th. And that's it for this, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Councilman Williams. On unfinished business, if you go back to-- Oh, I'm sorry, I am so sorry. Chief, do you have anything?
Let me, I will say this real quickly. Two weeks ago, when I was not here, Major Lewis sat in for me.
He didn't see that bus?
He's not grounded any longer. Grounded himself and I'm grounded. What he was referring to, the dispatch getting calls to us in nine or 10 minutes, he called me immediately afterwards, realizing what he had said, the alarm companies are not calling dispatch. So it is not Nelson County Dispatch that's holding calls, but the alarm companies are rather misleading to most people, both business and residential. And it's taking them upwards of nine to 10 minutes on average to call the emergency line, whether it's fire or police. So I just want to clarify in the open that it is not Nelson County Dispatch doing that.
And I will contest and swear in the oath that he is telling the truth because when the alarm company calls, they do not call the police department first, they call me and they wait for me to give my password and if I'm all right and then they say, shall we call the police? I always tell them, well, no, I'm already here, I've taken care of it myself. So, and he is right, I think the alarm company should call the department first, then business. But yes, Ray Lewis was correcting that fact that it's, I think they're calling in the wrong order.
Yeah, well, and you know, alarms are not even binding. We don't even have to respond to alarms. Most people think we have to, burger alarms, you know, we don't really put that out as much, but you think about it, it's a civil agreement. It's a private business or entity and contracting with a private business and nowhere are the police involved. So we don't push the issue and we really don't even ask the council to enforce the ordinance that's on the books because there are times we don't even get to burger alarms. When we're so busy, it's the last thing on our, you know, slate for the day. But I really think what happened was our two bank holdups. What really made us angry was from the time it was held up, the alarm companies took forever and it got to a point unfortunately where the tellers were calling dispatch, wondering where the police were. We had no idea. So that's unacceptable. But until it reaches us, we assume responsibility from that moment, but we can't until it gets there. I don't know the answer because again, it's a private business and a lot of people, you know, depend on it, but it's nothing that we can enforce very much about because of that.
Councilman, you have anything else?
I do, Mayor. Remember the other day I called you, some constituents asked me about the corner of Fifth Street and Stephen Foster?
Yeah.
The mayor, the elected general public--
The big helicopter blades? Well, Larry and myself and Hope are working on that and I don't know if we can really get anything solved out of it, but I can tell you that we're working on it and we're, I think we're in conversation with Frankford through a representative, E-Town. Hope is on the phone, so as soon as we can do anything, we will. But what has happened is that was a, and there you're correct, but I think that was a grant that was in the prior, in the prior administration that was a federal grant and it's done and let known this, you know, the past administration, this administration didn't have nothing to do with that or saying yes or no or anything, it was just done. But we're calling and we have a, you know, I think we'll be allowed to, if we can do anything, we might be allowed to paint them black.
But it's going to be a street light, street lights?
It's going to be street lights is what it's going to be.
You know it blocks out the courthouse coming from the west?
I have--
And it's ISO for the cathedral. It's--
It's so bad.
I can't say, it's galling.
We're working on it.
It's just galling.
Mayor, this might be the time for me to make a mention about the annexation committee because we all know of working on the cost benefit of the major subdivision and I've been-- I've been in touch with the mayor's staff and as some of you may have expected, it's a lot more complicated than it first appears. There's a lot of things involved there. So if it's okay with the other members of the committee, what I would like to do is just work with the mayor's staff and kind of gather all this stuff. Be easier for me to do it one-on-one and go down and meet with Jessica or Larry or whomever. And once I get that together, then, that you guys know, if we all do it together, we're going to call a meeting and it's just going to be clues. So if you don't think about it, I've asked the mayor, he's okay, working with his staff to do that. And I think we did it a lot quicker. And because there's just, there's a lot there.
I agree.
Well, that'd be fine. The only thing, when the mayor sent the proposal back to the committee, should we not meet and act on that or should we go on with the...
It would be my preference for us, for me to go ahead and gather this information and then when we meet, we can address that request at that time. That one. That's my opinion.
Are you asking me to go back to the committee and say, okay, then let the committee give him the authorization? It doesn't matter to me to do that. That's the committee, that's the committee that is, that is you all's decision. You all can work that out.
It would be, it would be easier if I just do it on my own because if we do it together, then it's, again, it's a meeting. It gets... And, okay, so I'm going to do that. I've talked some to Jessica already. But it's, it becomes a, it's not as, it's not as simple as just counting the miles of street and what's the cost of doing it. There's a lot here. Okay, and pick up another thing, so.
And if you councilmen don't like it, I mean, you need a voice now and do that consideration.
I think we'd expedite this whole situation quicker. And that's what we need to do. Unlike Francis was on it, we need to resolve this and expedite this whole issue quickly.
There are a lot of advantages in doing it the way that you're talking.
There are. Otherwise, we, I mean, I can't even share information with these two guys unless we're in a meeting, so it just gets... I'm just going to Jessica and Larry, whoever.
Councilman Copley?
I totally agree with what you're saying, Fred, but my question is, I thought you guys were going back to your committee to accept or not accept the proposal to withdraw the annexation of the distilleries. Has it already been done? I'm sorry.
No, 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 we haven't met.
You haven't met, but they, but everybody here that might have accepted the withdrawal of the distilleries.
What I would, that's what Bobby just asked. What I propose is, when we meet, we can address that rather than meeting just to address that without any of the information and then...
Well, okay, maybe I'm not asking hard. But if we're, if you're going to withdraw that proposal for annexation of the distilleries...
Which we are.
Okay, so you are. That's...
Who thinks we're not?
Well, I'm just thinking, I mean, if we're going to...
No.
I thought that was the procedure that you put the committee in.
Well, in an open meeting, every councilman's expressed an interest to drop that. I think it's a formality. It would be beyond anyone's comprehension that we would actually, I think, not accept that representation. I think it's to call a meeting, we have to publish the meeting, we have to meet, do that, and then come back with all the information later. In my mind, it's... Are you concerned, are you concerned that... Is there a concern or are you just wanting to dot that i and cross that t before you want?
Yeah. I just thought that, that's what, you know, so it just wouldn't, we wouldn't have that anymore. I mean, it was, I understand what you're saying. It was unthinkable, too.
I just don't think...
They did recommend at the last meeting that they withdrawn that regarding the distilleries. The last meeting that they did, we should have done that.
Well, we each individually did.
Yes, or, yeah.
Everyone individually did. Committee did.
So I think it'd be safe to say it.
It's withdrawn.
It's withdrawn, yeah.
Now we said it again.
Yeah.
Probably me.
Okay, okay. So we're on council member comments, is that correct?
Yes, I did that under the committee.
Okay, okay.
Any other, that's under the council chair. So if you go back to unfinished business, if we can do this, go back to number seven, which is talking about financing, where I had said where the budget, I don't know if I got it clear enough to you guys. Do you want to go back? Do you want the budget for the individual committees to do their budget or do y'all, do you want to work it together, a working session? No, it's your choice. It's your budget.
You are, you're prepared to, you're in the third, you have the finance group that has questions.
I got, I just got mine today.
I'm thinking you were not going to hand it out to the finance group.
I'm going to try because I'm going to go through mine. I started it today and I just, Tracy just laid it on my desk. It's, so...
Only problem I have, Mayor, the time of the essence is up. If you go back to the committee, see like me, timeframe on, just get it all completed between now and June. We got to go until end of June, the fiscal year, end of June, right? So everything got to be approved until June the third.
June the thirtieth, isn't it? June the thirtieth. Not June the third, it's June the thirtieth. So you're looking at the rest of April, May, and all June. So we got it, we got it quicker this time than we ever had.
Well, Larry, it's kind of semantic. So what, once, once you have the, in my opinion, once you have the budget, you can view it and you're okay with it. If we get it, then we can each go to our committees and we start looking at individually and go to our committees. I mean, I would say as soon as you're ready to give it to us, give it to us.
Well, I guess that's one I want to note, you know, because I mentioned that it should go to committees. You know, you individually, but then your committees, y'all want to take it and discuss it that way? I'm just trying to...
But once you give it to us, we can, we can make that. Tim, can he give that to us outside of an open meeting?
I believe you can.
He can send that to us tomorrow.
Sure. Information, that's sure.
That's information. So my, my, my preference would be as soon as you're ready to get to each other's individually, then we can each make that decision if we want to go to our committees and talk about it. And, because at the beginning, before I went to my committee, I was going to go through it myself.
Exactly.
And understand it. And then, you know, maybe, maybe meet individually when you're with one of the staff and get information, I think, the water, wastewater. And then, and then get the committee. So that's my opinion. Soon, I was, as soon as you're ready to send it out, I'd send it out and we could do what we want. Give it to our committees, prepare ourselves.
Well, we had that situation tonight. I mean, we got the vector cable voted tonight. Well, we as a committee, we shouldn't make any recommendation or anything from...
Yeah, that was a recommendation. That staff showing somebody.
So, but I could chew it up a little bit, sure.
I will get, I will get, no, I'll try to get no later than Monday because I'm just...
I'll pick up a printed copy. Please don't email it to me.
No, no, it'll be printed because it's thick.
Yeah. Especially if we can do it outside of a meeting, then we can do it.
I'll get those and I'll have those ready. You'll get an email when you can come pick them up and I'll try to have them before, before Monday. So no later than Friday. It's going to be tough, but I'll try.
Just be cautious about, don't try to deliberate.
Unhurt ourselves.
Yes. You know, individually, then if you want to deliberate, the committee structure is the appropriate way to do that.
Agreed.
Okay, let's go back to number ten, unfinished business. Number eleven, new business, municipal order two thousand and fifteen oh nine. It's the City Hall parking lot. Kathy, would you read the municipal order, please?
Municipal order number M two zero one five dash zero nine, Barstown City Hall. A municipal order authorized in the parking lot of Barstown City Hall located at two twenty North Fifth Street to be declared as a public place for the purpose and location of mobile food vending activities per ordinance B two zero one four dash zero three. The Barstown City Council determined this location will be suitable from the standpoint of the health and safety of the public and proper from the standpoint of site characteristics as a location in which mobile food vending activities may be allowed. On April twenty-first, two thousand and fifteen, from twelve noon to two P.M., the parking lot of Barstown City Hall will be allowed to house a mobile food vendor known as Conna Ice.
Okay, and D is a special permit, Conna Ice Mobile Food Vendor. And please explain the order and how we allow the special permit and as for the motion to apply to both.
For the municipal order and for, sorry?
For the municipal order and for the special permit to allow this Conna Ice to set up a mobile food vending itself. I'm kind of grouping them together, so...
And it's just shade eyes, is what it is?
Yeah, it's just shade eyes. So I guess what I'm...
So they're grouping it under the municipal order with the special permit just for that day?
And I'll make the order to approve municipal order number in two thousand and fifteen and we have to have a special permit.
The motion is approved, the municipal order two thousand and fifteen dash nine, the City Hall parking lot permit and the special permit for Conna Ice Mobile Food Vendor. All in favor? Eyes have it, those opposed? Those opposed? Eyes have it. Motion's adopted. Thank you, guys. Municipal order two M two thousand and fifteen dash ten, tax moratorium six oh two Bloomfield Road. And Ms. Kathy, would you please read the municipal order, please?
Municipal order number M two zero one five dash ten. A municipal order accepting the application for an assessment moratorium certificate for the property located at six oh two Bloomfield Road, Barstown, Kentucky, and expressing the city's intent to grant an assessment moratorium to the owner of said property upon compliance with the city's property assessment and reassessment moratoriums as defined in KRS Chapter ninety-nine point five nine five. Being ordered by the City Council of the City of Barstown, Kentucky, Section One, that the application for assessment moratorium certificate for the property located at six oh two Bloomfield Road, Barstown, Kentucky, is hereby accepted and further expressing the city's intent to grant an assessment moratorium to the owner of said property upon compliance with the city's property assessment and reassessment moratoriums as defined in KRS Chapter ninety-nine point five nine five. Section Two, that this order shall take effect and be in full force when passed at recorded
Tracy or Mayor, refresh my memory on the tax moratorium. What would, how's a property approved for that?
They go through the PDA's office. I'm not exactly sure how the amount's set, but then they get five years.
What makes them eligible to apply for it?
I couldn't tell you that off the top of my head.
I think what they have to do is it has to be a building over a certain age and then they have to invest money to renovate.
It's just twenty-five?
Twenty-five years or older. And then they get assessed whatever the property value is at that time, they pay taxes on that property.
I understand all of that. I just didn't remember how they, how they...
Yeah, forty-five years or older.
And you have to, you just can't go there, spend a few dollars and get it. You have to spend a considerable amount of dollars.
That'd have to be in the historical province, I would guess.
Well, that's kind of why I was trying to remember why that, it's just the age. Will that be in case I make a motion, we approve municipal order number in two thousand and fifteen dash ten?
Second. Discussion. The motion on the floor for is municipal order M two thousand and fifteen dash nine, excuse me, municipal order two thousand and fifteen dash ten, the tax moratorium on six oh two Bloomfield Road. All in favor? Those opposed? Eyes have it. Motion's adopted. Thank you. Is D municipal order M two thousand and fifteen dash eleven, street standards and guidelines?
Phew, my last one. Municipal order M two zero one five dash eleven, city of Barstown, street standards and guidelines. Whereas the city of Barstown City has previously adopted the subdivision regulations for Nelson County's latest revisions, which address minor differences in street width requirements for the city of Barstown and Nelson County and, whereas in an effort to have consistency within the community for public street design, construction, and acceptance and to assist a private developer in the design and construction of subdivision roadways, the city of Barstown does hereby order that the following street standards and guidance documents be adopted. General provision for the design and construction of public roadways, latest revision, and guidelines for the release of performance bonds and the acceptance of roadways into the Nelson County roadway maintenance systems, latest revision. Where the above guidance documents are silent, the city of Barstown will refer to the Kentucky Department of Highway Standards specification for road and bridge construction as well as design standards. With exception as follows, general provision for the design and construction of public roadways, number one, section I, street lighting exclude to meet city requirements. Two, section K, stormwater, drainage plan, and encroachments, see separate city ordinance. Three, attachments, pages fifteen and page sixteen, exclude typical county street section and use typical city street section. Four, attachments, page seventeen, amend title to say city street section when lot greater or equal one hundred feet with a street revised to the city standard of twelve feet for curve and gutter section. Guidelines fall back to the subdivision regulations. Five, attachments, page eighteen, follow city notations and add typical sidewalk detail must also conform to ADA requirements, including ramps and drive approach, approach and cross slopes. Six, attachments, page nineteen, exclude private road street requirements. Seven, page twenty, to be included as applicable, no city street design for speeds greater than fifty miles per hour. Guidelines for release of performance bonds and the acceptance of roadways into strike Nelson County Insert City of Barstown Roadway Maintenance Systems. One, the city of Barstown's requirement for the performance of street construction is contained within the standard subdivision agreement that must be signed by the owner and the city. The standard subdivision agreement is secured with a letter of credit. Two, when working in the city of Barstown, the letter of credit is to be secured with the city and not Nelson County Fiscal Court. All other language that refers to the Nelson County Road Department, NCRD, or Nelson County Engineer, NCE, is to be substituted with Barstown Public Works Department or the city civil engineer. When working in the city of Barstown, the above adopted guidelines are to be followed in addition to all ordinances and other requirements of the city. Any provision of these rules and guidelines are to be found in conflict with existing city ordinance. The city ordinance shall govern. In addition, the city of Barstown has requirements with respect to stormwater as a result of being a municipal separate storm sewer system, MS four, having a KPDES permit with the Kentucky Division of Water. See City of Barstown Code of Ordinance Book, Chapter ninety-six, street curves and sidewalks, and Chapter one fifty-six, drainage control.
Mayor, coming to order, I'd like to make a motion to set municipal order M two thousand and fifteen dash eleven, which identifies the city of Barstown's street standards and guidelines, and I yield the floor for discussion.
Second. Discussion.
Hey, a question. So right now, Jessica, we don't have standards. Is this replacing something or...
It's, we do, we currently don't have our own set of...
Okay. So will we rewrite this using these exceptions as a separate document to hand to contractor?
I figured we could utilize, at some point, we may be able to do that. At this point, I was going to just take their document with this exceptions, maybe in the front or in a memorandum. Most designers that are doing work in our community are already utilizing this guideline and this design standards. But it's just adopting it and making it more formal. The other thing that I wanted to make sure that we did, that the fiscal court recently did, is making sure they basically have amended the point at which they accepted public street into the system. And I wanted to make sure we adopted that change and show consistency. So I didn't just want to say we adopted all of the county standards without pointing out that verbiage change, you know, when it refers to these, to the road component or referring to the city.
Yeah, I understand all that, but this, this document doesn't have all the... Yeah, I understand all that, but this document doesn't have all the verbiage. They have to go with this other document that's already been approved by the fiscal court. And, okay, as long as...
Right, and I'll try to consolidate everything that we need into a standard book or things that we're adopting. I'll try to put it, put those documents together, but they'll still have similar titles.
Okay.
And some of this stuff is already somewhat put into the subdivision regulations, which both fiscal court and all the cities within Nelson County have adopted. But it's trying to clarify some of that.
These exceptions you had, I guess you and Larry got together and decided what those needed to be?
Yes, because the things that were accepted were basically things that said were specific to Nelson County road widths, and our city road width is 26 feet for a non-cover intersection. So they have 10 and 11 and various road widths, so we were just striking those portions and including, and they had included a city standard as well. So we just were trying to say that doesn't apply for city.
Okay, and the performance bond, we should have that now? This is something that'll be new?
We have a sub, ours is called a subdivision agreement. So it's, they have a performance bond document that's basically an agreement that allows them to cash in the letter of credit unapproved for proofers that aren't done. We have a subdivision agreement. So they basically do the same thing, but we have our own documents.
And then you refer back to the existing ordinances that have already covered other things like...
All right, the motion on the floor was for municipal order 2000M215. So we've had the first and second, so all in favor? Ayes. Those opposed? Ayes have it. Motion is adopted. Thank you. Next on the list is item E, which is the police canine consideration. Councilman Buckman, you have the floor.
This is for another police canine consideration. Let me give you, our canine program started in 1991. I started that program with funding from the city and the councils at the time, and Dixie Hiss. I think from her father, from Bill Polly, had something to do with it, but anyway. The canine program's been in existence since 91, and it's been a very productive program, unbelievable program, and a self-supporting program. I accumulated over probably $140,000 worth of forfeiture money to the city through my canine, and it's been carried on ever since. The county, the city at this time has two canines officers, and since chief went to a different scheduling program, we have a dog on two of the three shifts. Officer Riley, stand up, Reese. Officer Reese Riley took the initiative to, with the blessing of chief, to initiate the purchase of the third canine. And through private contributions and businesses and so forth, he's accumulated $5,350 of the needed $8,950, which leaves us about $3,600 for the canine, which is a small investment by the council to acquire a piece of equipment to fight the problem that we have in Nelson County, and everybody talks about the heroin trade. And I've talked to the chief about this, and the heroin's coming in through the VG. My biggest push was interdiction on Bluegrass Parkway, which will eventually lead to forftures, confiscation of vehicles and money. There's a lot of DEA, and there's always a ton of money, and drugs going up and down the VG, and they're getting off at our exits, and they're coming into our town. And I think if we can support this officer, and the communities are contributing over two-thirds of the money to purchase the dog, that shows communities behind this endeavor, that they want this additional canine. We have motivated the officer to want this canine. It's a small investment for the council, and I think we show good faith as we support this officer. It would take an additional $2,100 to fit the vehicle, so we're looking at maybe a total, a total of $5730 to put a dog on the ground. That's a two-week training from Little Rock Canine Academy, where we purchased two dogs before. The county police has a unit, officer going down in May. They've just purchased a new dog from this. It's a well-established canine outfit, very credible dog, very credible service. They give the two weeks, that motel, that's all expenses, the training certifications, everything that this officer needs to put a dog on the ground and start work. Chief has some more viewpoints on it, he'd like to present the...
I kind of reiterate a lot what Councilman Buckman said. It was the idea to try to get more dogs out on the street, and it was in, you know, just general conversation that Reese was having with a business owner. And the business owner said, "How come we don't have more?" He said, "It's like everything, it's money." So we've got businesses that have written $1,000 checks, some 500, whereas they want to do their part. They know that drugs is our biggest issue, every crime, other than a domestic situation. And I know I've said this before, there's a nexus to drugs in this town, everything. And this is something that I think we can spread the dogs on, have them out every evening, every night of the week, and one during the day on rotating days. The dogs do pay for themselves. The second dog we purchased last year, excuse me, paid for himself in one traffic stop. We see $7,000 cash and a car. That car now belongs to City Hall, and it's, I guess what, City Hall employees drive. So we more than paid for that dog in one 10-minute traffic stop. And we have taken a lot of our assets through that, that we buy a lot of equipment that I don't have to use on the budget. So, you know, if this is something that you're willing to do, it's certainly appreciated. When the business community speaks, I think that kind of resonates with us all. That's our, that's our community that knows there's a problem. They're the ones that complained to us to do something. We need the tools to continue to do it. So I'll stand down if anyone has any questions to me or anything.
Chief, will this dog, will he also track?
They do everything, track.
So it's a multi-purpose?
Yes.
Personal dog, do, he does everything?
Yeah, they do everything but bomb detection. And we need to get into that. Everything else, so.
It's like a dual-purpose dog. What we have now, most of the time go with the shepherds. It's, they'll do track, drug detection, and personal officer detection apprehensions. Just other day, when the individual threw the gun out of the vehicle, I think one of the canine units located the gun, they do article search. That's part of the track. They throw a gun out, go out in field, find it, track something that's been thrown out, drug's been thrown out of the car, and so forth. There's a lot of utilization for dogs, could be used properly.
Not forbid that kid, that kid, if you gotta hold that handgun.
That's right.
Just one, one officer trained for that dog, how y'all got to do it? You have more than one officer?
No, the dog and the officer are partners, that you can't, I don't even get near the dog.
My dog stayed with me for 15 years till I put him down.
They become partners, I mean, that's who, they can sit right there.
It's not like, it's not like a car or one officer can get in and not get him out. They create a bond with each other that you, and the best bond I've ever known was one that Jeff, what's his name?
Jason Ellis?
No, Jeff.
Jeff?
Oh, yeah.
Well, he was, he trained stops, but he had a bond with his dog that was unbelievable. It's just, it's something that you can't, you just can't realize. And I think it's like in Jason Ellis's situation, that dog, nobody else could use that dog. It's just, it's just with that one guy. So how do you, how do you guys feel about this?
I don't know, it means, I mean, for that amount of money, that's, that doesn't really require our approval. I'm fine with it.
I mean, I just want to give a consensus, because before...
The chief, they have the tool he needs.
And the question is, is that everybody here has to ask herself, that we've all have asked ourselves, is, and I think, Councilman Williams, you know, you at school, Bobby and I talked about it many hours, about the drugs. It's a compound of this town, and I think, and it'll be able to locate heroin too, correct?
Yes.
And I think it's almost one of those things, how can you say no?
I think the most important thing is that the city, citizens fall into it, so I can't understand why we wouldn't.
Money will...
Thank you. I agree.
Thank you.
So you ready to go to your doggy daycare down there?
I'm ready.
Very good, very good. Uh, Councilman, uh, Councilman Simpson?
Not that I know of.
Okay, I'm cool. Councilman Buckman?
I was wanting to thank the council for approving that money for the dog that's near and dear to heart.
Councilman Williams?
Living the dream.
Yeah. You need my shoes? Councilman Haggin?
No.
Dan?
No.
Yes.
Councilman Copley?
I know Ben's not here today, and I don't know if you can help me, Jessica, but a citizen had called in reference to Ashbury and the dumpsters out there. They're overflowing, and an owner was actually going out there and picking up trash after they've already been picked up. They're becoming full again, but she had to stop picking up because there's needles. I know that's a problem area, but is there any way that we can get with the owners of those? It's not the townhomes, it's the apartments, the slew of apartments back there, and their dumpsters. It looks like, I wrote back there, it looks like they're not big enough for all of those people that are back there. But the problem is, citizens want to pick up that trash, and they can't, because there's needles out there. I know we have a problem out there, but...
That's a problem for our own city workers as well, because we don't instruct them to pick up that kind of stuff, because it's a liability and a safety hazard for themselves as well. So I think that certainly we can talk about this after the meeting and or do a work to get and kind of investigate the situation a little further, because if it's a consistent problem that is being caused by the owners of the dumpsters, paying for the dumpster, then that's something we need to... Generally, that request either comes from our drivers noting that the dumpsters are always overflowing, is it maybe we need to do an additional pickup? Or the owner needs to ask for an additional point of pickup, and we want to pay for an additional pickup. So there's other things that can be done. And sometimes it's a matter of, it's not the owners of the facility or the people who are renting the dumpster, it's drive-bys throwing stuff in it. And that is a problem we have struggled as a community to address, because even with cameras, that is very time-consuming, and trying to nail down, it's almost impossible. So there's a couple of avenues that we can look at and see what's going on.
We're gonna have a, I've been working, myself, Larry, and Jessica, we're working on this garbage situation. We have a solution, and it's just not there, but we have dumpsters in different parts of town that are overflowing, and this is just gonna have to require more dumping. But we've got a, we've got a plan, as soon as we get it completed, then I'll bring it to you and show you what's happening.
One more question. Tracy, in reference to the delinquent charges, I noticed that one charge was going from $3 to $3.50. When is the last time that we've increased the delinquent charges? Would you know that?
I think it's 10 years, and I don't think we've increased it from the minimum of $3.50.
Right, cemetery deeds. If there's no objection, I'd like to adopt a motion to approve the cemetery deeds for Danielle, Sheila Berry, and Joseph and Rosie Dodson. Make motion, do you have? It's time to just go right over there. I'm just gonna go back to, since there's no objections, I'll make the motion to approve those cemetery deeds, and they are adopted. 14, announcements. Margaret Berry, meter department, 20-year anniversary. Trevor Maddenley, fire department, 10-year anniversary. And Jason Woodson, police department, 10-year anniversary. I think they all, they are thankful for the service that you see them out. I think dedicated employees, and says a lot. So if there's no objection, I'm going to adopt a motion to adjourn. Since there's no objections, motion is, adjourn is adopted.